Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order. Andy, you want to call the roll, please?
Here.
Mr. Reiner. Save somewhere, Ms. Saley. Mr. Peterson. Vice Mayor Gerber.
Here.
Mayor Keenan.
Here.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Here.
Okay, we will have the Fledge of Allegiance. Rick, you want to lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Okay. Welcome, everybody. We have a special presentation tonight. There's an update from Dublin Arts Council. David Ginn. Welcome, David.
So, thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak briefly this evening. This presentation is very different from most that we present at Dublin Arts Council. We have an incredible opportunity to reach those who work, live, and visit Dublin with images that tell the story of the Vietnam War. We need your help to realize this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The following images speak for themselves. Now some background and specifics to set the scene. Photojournalist Eddie Adams covered thirteen wars, beginning with a stint as a Marine Corps combat photographer in Korea in the early 1950s and ending in Kuwait in 1991. He did three tours of Vietnam with the Associated Press and won the Pulitzer Prize for photography for his shot of Viet Cong lieutenant being executed at close range on a Saigon street by a South Vietnamese general. In his more than five decades as a working photographer, Adams received more than 500 awards honoring his work, and we have a chance in Dublin to recognize his achievements. Adams photographed a diverse list of some of the most celebrated people in the world: Mother Teresa, Ronald Reagan, Fidel Castro, Pope John Paul II, Betty Davis, and Arnold Schwarzenegger, among many others. He remains one of the most published photographers in the United States with a portfolio that includes one-on-one sessions with over seven U.S. presidents and 60 heads of state. It's not the war photos, or the celebrity photos, or the awards that define what's most important about Adams' work. It's the photos that have moved and inspired people to do good, the photos that have led to important changes in policy and in people's lives. He was very proud of his 1979 shot Boat of No Smiles depicting 50 Vietnamese people on a 30-foot fishing boat fleeing their homeland. It was Adams' photo of these boat people that ultimately led Congress and President Jimmy Carter to open the doors to the U.S. to more than 200,000 Vietnamese refugees. Eddie Adams passed away in 2004 at the age of 71, a victim of Lou Gehrig's disease. Dublin Community Relations and I have been working directly with Alyssa Adams, Eddie Adams' widow, since February 2014, to bring this important collection of 50 of his photos of Vietnam to Dublin Arts Council in 2015, which is also the year of the 50th Vietnam War Commemoration. DAC has applied to the USA Vietnam Commemorative Commemoration Partner Program. The museum-quality exhibition is rare and has only been seen in a number of locations. As part of Dublin's 2015 Memorial Day activities and events, the exhibition will open May 25th, and it will be on view through September 11th. Incidentally, this photo shows U.S. Marine Lieutenant John Schwartz of Columbus at age 25. He's the one on the right. He's directing his last combat mission after leaving Vietnam. The exhibition will honor veterans in Dublin, central Ohio, and beyond, providing aesthetic, emotional, and educational experiences, including lectures and community workshops conducted by our distinguished guests, Alyssa Adams and close friend Hal Buell, who ran the Associated Press photo service for 25 years. Mr. Buell will provide a personal walkthrough of the exhibition for city council members and other VIPs. Mr. Buell explains that the Vietnam War was a turning point for a war photographer like Adams. According to Buell, no war was ever photographed the way Vietnam was, and no war will ever be photographed that way again. These firsthand experiences and relationships will bring the stories of this exhibition to the community with a framework that no others could provide. Those who work, live, and visit Dublin will be able to respond to this award-winning work in an intimate space, a key component of viewing and fully experiencing the exhibition. The exhibition will include the video documentary "An Unlikely Weapon: The Eddie Adams Story" by Morgan Cooper, with Dublin Arts Council's addition of a video feedback booth to collect stories from visitors, veterans, their families, and others who experienced the exhibition. DAC will fully document and fully evaluate, similar to our other exhibitions that have focused on art as a catalyst for social awareness and change. Dublin has the chance to capture stories that have never been told. The full project budget was submitted to council on June 18th, and to recap, we anticipate it will take $56,400 to realize the project. In addition to grants from the National Endowment for the Arts, foundation sponsorships, and other sources of revenue outlined in the income portion of that budget, Dublin Arts Council respectfully submits a special request of hotel motel tax in the amount of $12,000 to support the exhibition, exhibition fees, shipping, community education, printing, and a stipend to bring Hal Buell and Alyssa Adams to Dublin. We have spoken to Hal and Alyssa, and they are thrilled to be part of this exhibition and allow Eddie's work to travel to Dublin. So, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Council, any questions?
You basically, from us, only need $12,500, is that correct?
Let me understand, is this, would this be part of a bed tax grant that we would look at under Finance Committee? Is that next month scheduled?
Yeah, it would be a special bed tax request, but I wanted to bring it before you to show you what it was, because I think the images speak louder than a grant application.
Very good. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Having just returned from Vietnam a few weeks ago, I'm looking forward to the exhibition, so hopefully we'll get that through and be prepared to bring them on board in Dublin. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. This brings the citizen comments. I don't believe we have anybody signed up. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. Anybody, any council member who requests that an item be removed? If there are no requests... Is there a motion to approve the actions? Second?
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 5214.
Authorizing execution of conveyance documents to acquire a 0.008 acre more or less temporary easement from Sado Family Partnership for property located at the southeast corner of Dublin Road and East Waterview Drive for construction of improvements at the intersection of Dublin Road and Glick Road and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hammersmith.
Members of council, you have before you this evening the first of many acquisitions for the Dublin improvement of the Dublin Road and Glick Road intersection. The first of that before you this evening is for the Sado Family Partnership. The settlement amount, as indicated in the staff report, was for $525 for a temporary easement necessary for the project. And that being what is depicted on your screen. Staff recommends approval and treating this as an emergency action. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Council, any questions?
I'll move to treat this as an emergency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anne, on the motion?
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes. On the ordinance.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Ordinance 53-14.
Authorizing execution of conveyance documents to acquire 0.006 acre more or less feasible interest, 0.074 more or less temporary easement from Sado Family Partnership for property located at the north side of Glick Road between East Ossage Drive, Fenmar Drive, and Shawnee Trail for construction of improvements at the intersection of Dublin Road and Glick Road and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hammersmith?
Once again, council, as related to the improvement of the Dublin Road and Glick Road intersection, again, from the Sado Family Partnership, but this acquisition being both for permanent right-of-way and temporary right-of-way along the north side of Glick Road, as depicted on the exhibit on the screen, total compensation $7,400. Again, staff is recommending approval and that this be treated as an emergency.
Very good. Questions?
Move to treat it as an emergency.
Second.
Anne, on the motion?
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
And the ordinance.
On the ordinance, yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And ordinance 54-14.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire 0.040 acre more or less fee simple interest from James G. Clymer for the property located at 7379 Sawmill Road for construction of improvements at the intersection of Sawmill Road and Hard Road and declaring an emergency.
Very good. Mr. Hammersmith? We're going to Sawmill Road now, right?
Yes. We're over to now to the east on the Sawmill Road-Hard Road intersection. As part of that improvement to the intersection, which, again, we are working on cooperatively with the City of Columbus, but on the west side of the roadway, south of Hard Road, we are acquiring a fee simple right-of-way from Mr. Clymer. Just to orient you on the exhibit on the screen, the pointer to work, this is Lifetime Fitness right here, and this would be the driveway onto Sawmill Road. This is the Clymer parcel, just to the south of there. The settlement value is $9,500, as indicated in the staff report. Staff does recommend approval, and once again, this be treated as an emergency measure.
Questions? Motion treats emergency?
So...
Second.
Second? On the motion?
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
And on the ordinance.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes. Very good. Ordinance 55-14.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire 0.023 acre more or less temporary easement from Dogwood Enterprises LP for the property located at 7315 Sawmill Road for construction of improvements at the intersection of Sawmill Road and Hard Road declaring an emergency.
Anne, one more time, Mr. Hammersmith?
Yes, once again, still at the Sawmill Road-Hard Road intersection, as depicted on the screen, just to the south of Mr. Clymer's property, we are dealing with Dogwood Enterprises, this being a temporary easement necessary for the project, really to just reconstruct the driveway that's located on the property. The settlement value was $2,500. As indicated in the staff report, staff recommends approval, and once again, this be treated as an emergency measure.
Questions? Motion treats emergency?
So...
Second.
On the motion?
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson. Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
And on the ordinance.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Thank you, Paul. I move to suspend the council rules of order to group ordinances 56-14, 57, 58, and 59, 14 together. Ask clerk to read the names of the property owners into the record. For a second? On the motion?
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. 56, 14 is Laurie F. Birchfield and Catherine A. Birchfield. 57, 14 is Muska Properties LLC. 58, 14 is Mary J. Williston trustee of the Mary J. Williston Trust. 59, 14 is Stephen H. Heinlein and Kendra E. Heinlein.
Mr. Hammersmith?
Back over to the other side of the river again to the Dublin Road-Glick Road intersection, as indicated in the staff report. We do have a temporary construction easement from the Birchfields. To orient you on the exhibit on the screen, this would be Walgreens at the northeast corner of the intersection of Birchfield Property, just immediately to the north. The temporary easement needed is along the east side of Dublin Road. The settlement value is $2,150. Staff does recommend approval, and once again, treat this as an emergency measure.
Questions?
I just had a quick question. The sign that they have, how will this road improvement affect that sign and landscape area?
For the Birchfields? Or for Walgreens?
Walgreens.
Yeah, Walgreens.
Sign is either, I believe is going to remain at the location that it exists presently, if I'm recalling correctly, but I can't... Relocate? Yeah, I'm recalling it incorrectly, that it does get relocated.
Is that, that will be true of the Morgan House as well?
Yes, and also for the Muirfield Association.
Muirfield Association, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to treat the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
I think we were going to maybe group these together.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Paul was going to proceed with maybe doing the presentation for each of these.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
My apologies. Okay. So you want to go to ordinance 60-14? Is that where I'm at?
57.
57.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and this actually being Walgreens.
Oh, I see.
Immediately to the south of the previous discussion, and this being, if you look at the staff report and review it on the second page, we do do a breakdown of the compensation to Walgreens, and to your question, Ms. Tennessee Zerker, yes, it does include the site improvements, which is the relocation of the sign. Total compensation, $59,450. Again, that's broken down on page two of the staff report. We continue to work with Walgreens on this particular part of the project. Staff does recommend approval this evening, and once again, we treat this as an emergency measure.
All of these, this is a question. The sites, I know that Morgan House is actually in Dublin, but Walgreens really isn't in Dublin itself, right?
No, it's not.
So, the reason that we're paying for all this without Shawnee Hills participating is because we've agreed to improve the intersection.
Correct.
Yeah, and part of the discussion that we had when we were looking through the financial partnerships between Delaware County, the Village of Shawnee Hills, ODOT, and the City of Dublin, was also Shawnee Hills made, they were originally going to make a request for $400,000 in grant funding, but based upon the thought that we were going to need additional dollars for right-of-way acquisition. Originally, their hope was that they would be able to get the right-of-way dedicated. They made a request for a $500,000 grant to help offset some of the additional acquisition cost, and we were approved for the $511,000 grant. So that part of it was looking at ways that we could provide additional funding from Shawnee Hills, and they were the ones that were the grant requister.
Great.
Okay. I think there was a little additional for the sign removal that we talked about tonight.
Yeah.
So that $60,630 is what I had.
Yeah, we've had continued discussions with them, and they had presented us with information on additional costs that were $1,100 more than our appraised, our appraisal reflected.
Any other questions on that property? You want to go on to the next one? 50, 14?
The next acquisition associated with the Dublin Road-Glick Road intersection is from the Williston Trust, and it actually is the shopping center, which is located at the southeast corner of the intersection. The exhibit on the screen shows all the acquisitions associated with this particular piece of property. Several folks involved in this parcel, including the Wendy's that's located at the immediate corner of the parcel, which is right here where the arrow pointed. As indicated in the staff report, the settlement value is $77,550. That includes both the fee simple interest, the temporary easements necessary, and then any associated site improvements that are impacted by the project. Staff does recommend this evening approval of this ordinance and that it be treated as an emergency measure.
Any other questions on that one?
Just a quick one. Wendy's has its trash cans and dumpsters with a retaining wall. Is that going to be taken out?
I'm not sure if that is completely impacted by the acquisition or not. I'd have to follow up with you on that.
Yeah, because I'd like to either see them move those, because they're right sitting on the street up to now, they've been screened with some Austrian pines, but, you know.
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Reiner, I think they're located, am I correct, in this area?
Right.
Right.
Yeah, and that's just a temporary easement for grading purposes, so I don't think we're going to be impacting those.
Great.
So I think the intent is for them to remain.
That'd be a big eyesore if that thing's sitting there on screen.
Can you give us some more detailed later, follow up to the next packet or whatever, if you will?
Yep. Yeah, we can give you more detail from the plans.
Okay. 59, 14? Morgan House? Looks like it's a relatively small...
Yes. This particular acquisition is from the Heinleins located at the northwest corner of the Dublin-Glick Road intersection, best known as the Morgan House. It's depicted on the screen. Once again, we have several different pieces of acquisition from the Morgan House, both fee simple right-of-way, storm sewer easement, several temporary easements, and then compensation for the existing site improvements that are impacted, and then some also resulting damages from the additional right-of-way. Total compensation, as indicated in the staff report to the Heinleins, $42,780. Staff does recommend approval of this ordinance this evening, and that it be treated as an emergency measure.
Okay, any questions on that? If not, it'll be a motion to treat the ordinance as an emergency?
Already made the motion.
Made the motion, so we need a vote now on the motion?
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
And on the ordinances.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Ordinance 60-14.
Authorizing execution of conveyance documents to accept the donation of 0.014 acre more or less permanent access easement from Kristoff Land and Development LLC for the property located at 6465 Sawmill Road to provide pedestrian access to bicycle parking racks, benches, and other similar facilities open to the general public.
Mr. Gundermann?
Thank you. I think the explanation in the ordinance is fairly close to the mark here. This is a required dedication coming from the Bridge Street code regulat, the Bridge Street zoning code regulations. If you're familiar with the building, it's under construction. It was small enough that it was done as a minor project review by the ART, so there was no other process to get this sort of easement mixed in with, as there usually would be on a lot of bigger projects, so it comes to you all by its lonesome. It's strictly the open space requirement. It's actually well in excess of the minimum required for this project.
Very good. Any questions? A vote on the ordinance, Anne?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
I move to suspend the council rules of order to group ordinances 61, 62, 63, 14 together, and ask clerk to read the names of the property owners into the record.
Second.
On the move.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
61, 14 is Dale Drive Properties LLC. 62, 14 is GNI Sycamore Ridge LLC. 63, 14 is Storm Master Funding LLC.
Ms. Kelly, Anne?
Good evening, council members. This project is for the construction of the north-south connection between the existing Toller Ridge and Dale Drives within the Bridge Street District. The city must obtain property interest from three landowners in order to construct the project, the first being Dale Drive, second Sycamore Ridge, and Storm Master. City's hopeful that amicable resolution may be reached with the property owners. We have the property interests appraised, and the appraised values are outlined on pages two and three of the staff report. Staff recommends approval of ordinances 61, 14 as amended, 62, 14, and 63, 14 by emergency as the construction of the project is necessary, and the approval of the ordinances will keep the project moving forward.
Very good. Any council questions?
I'll move to treat the ordinances as an emergency.
Thank you.
Second.
On the emergency, Anne?
Mr. Peterson. Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
And on the ordinances.
Mr. Peterson. Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And Mayor Keenan.
Yes. Ordinance 64-14.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.562 acre more or less permanent easement, 0.245 acre more or less temporary easement from Dublin Techmark LLC and Techmark Venture LLC as tenants in common for the burial of overhead electric telecommunications utility lines underground along France Road and declaring an emergency.
Very good. Mr. Hammersmith?
Yes, members of council, this evening you have before you an acquisition necessary for the burial of utility lines along the west side of France Road, a project that is contained within the adopted CIP. Project has been designed. We do have a few other acquisitions associated with this project, but before you this evening is one from Dublin Techmark located at the northwest corner, take that back, south, it's to be the southwest corner, I'm sorry, of Blazer and France Roads. The appraised value, both for the permanent easement, which is just over a half acre, and the temporary easement, which is just under a quarter acre, and the site improvements impacted by the project, are indicated in your staff report at just over $115,000. Staff does recommend approval this evening, and once again, this be treated both as an emergency measure and that we dispense with the public hearing. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Very good. Questions?
I'll move to treat as emergency.
Second. Thank you. On the motion?
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Leck Leider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes. And on the ordinance.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Leck Leider.
Yes.
And Mayor Keenan.
Yes. I move to suspend the council rules of order to group ordinances sixty-five dash fourteen, sixty-six dash fourteen together. Introduce them and ask clerk to read the names of the property owners into the record.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Leck Leider.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Sixty-five fourteen is Muirfield Association, Inc., and sixty-six fourteen is William R. Stapleton and Deborah L. Stapleton.
Very good. This is your day, Paul.
Thank you. Appreciate that. You have before this evening, members of council, a component of the Muirfield Drive Bike Lane Project, which is on your agenda later for bid acceptance. This portion being related to the pedestrian bridges, bridges that will be built over the North Fork Indian Run as depicted on exhibit on the screen. Muirfield Drive. You're kind of going diagonally across the exhibit, and then in the purple are the two bridges and then the associated paths. Necessary to construct these bridges, we do need a permanent easement from the Muirfield Association, also from the Country Club at Muirfield Village, and then one from also a private property owner this evening. The private property owner being the Stapletons located right here on Nassau Loop. As indicated in the staff report, we do appreciate from the Muirfield Association the donation of their easement. We also recognize the donation that they have given at the Dublin Glick Road intersection, at the southwest corner of the intersection, so we are very appreciative of that. And then we also, if we're going to, you want me to continue just to talk of these as a group? Okay. For the Country Club at Muirfield, we are on the west side of the roadway, just north of the North Fork Indian Run. There are two different acquisitions or easements necessary, one in this vicinity for the path, I apologize, it's hard to see on the screen, and then one right at the corner of Moore's Place and Muirfield Drive. Total settlement value for those acquisitions being twenty thousand dollars. And then lastly, for the Stapletons, again, located on Nassau Loop, which is a permanent easement along the east side of Muirfield Drive. The appraised value for those folks and they have agreed to is four thousand dollars as provided in the staff report, and again, that's ordinance sixty-six dash fourteen. And then staff has asked for the one with the Bright Meyers be removed from the agenda this evening. Staff recommends approval. Again, that these be treated as an emergency measure and that we dispense with the public hearing. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions?
So the ones right now that you just discussed are sixty-five.
And sixty-six.
And sixty-six only, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And I jumped ahead to seventy dash fourteen, which I know was later on the agenda, but kind of hard to talk about.
I'm sorry, did you have more? I wanted to make a comment, but I didn't want to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just want to be clear, insofar as this, I believe, relates to Resolution fifty-eight dash fourteen, correct? Which is the bid?
Correct.
Okay.
These are acquisitions necessary.
Okay.
For that, the construction of that project.
Which I don't support. So I just, I just want to be clear. Consistent with the discussion that we had with respect to this project three years ago, when I voted no. You know, if there was a way to separate out the shared use path versus the bike lanes, I supported the idea of the shared use path. You know, I can have more discussion when we get to the resolution, but you know, lest there be any confusion with respect to why I was voting no, that's why.
Very good.
I have a follow-up question to that. Steve, it's a little hard to understand. If we voted yes for this type of thing, does that, the acquisitions, does it require us to vote yes later on at this other bidding? All right, thank you.
I guess that's my dilemma. I mean, I appreciate the donation, you know, for the shared use path, and that's why, you know, I'm trying to present a consistent position.
Well, it does make a good point, because can you acquire something if you don't have a need to use it?
Well, that's the issue, is if the projects are not going to move forward, there would not be the need for the acquisition. You could vote for the acquisition. If it's something that the thought is the project is going to be deferred or delayed, that's a different issue.
Then you can do, you could vote for the acquisition and delay it.
Correct.
With the other vote, yeah.
Correct. I mean, I don't know how much discussion we want to, we want to have at this point ahead of the resolution, but you know, the fact that, you know, that the project cost is nearly doubled from one point four million to two point eight million, and you know, at the time, you know, I questioned, you know, the streetlights, you know, and the fact that it was going to result in our ownership. You know, the city's ownership versus AEP, and that's a big part of the increased cost here. So anyway, I mean, you know, I'm happy to repeat, you know, it has been three years.
Well, there's been some other discussion too, and actually, probably at this juncture, Amy weighed in on this from out of town. She couldn't make it because of some flight delays or what have you, but she questioned the decision to build those at a cost of two point three six million at this time. So I don't want to put words in her mouth, but that's what this email says. This sounds like maybe even a discussion for delay. Basically talking about the fact that we've had some, we've had some revenue losses from a budget perspective with Verizon and nationwide departures. She's hung her hat on that, so I just raised that for her on her behalf. Seems like a good time to interject that.
A couple of things probably important to point out. In the original work that was done by our consultant, they included just the relocation of the light poles. That's something that at that point in time, we probably should have identified as an issue because our goal would have been to replace them because we've had, I would say, longstanding problems with reliability of those lights and the fact that AEP maintains them versus the city of Dublin. Typically, we are able to respond quicker to outages for the lights that we own. Also, the placement of those light poles are very close to the existing roadway, and as you drive up and down Muirfield Drive, periodically you see poles laying on the ground because somebody has gotten off the road slightly and hit the pole. So this would allow the poles to be moved further off the roadway and eliminate that problem. Also, the, the bridge structures that were previously identified, I think were identified at a hundred and twenty thousand per structure, and based upon the other bids that we've gotten on other projects, that, that was just a low amount. So our recommendation with regard to the light poles would be, it makes more sense for us to own and operate poles. We currently pay a fee for, to AEP to operate and maintain, and we believe with the switch out, we will have better service in those areas, and it will be more reliable, and it will be safer from the standpoint that poles are back further from the road. So we would recommend that, yes, the price is higher than originally programmed. And the issue of concerns raised about employees leaving the city from a couple of the firms mentioned, that is the case. But as we've reported in our recent updates to the Finance Committee, we're very fortunate in that other income tax revenues have increased, and our increase for two thousand fourteen through the end of June is almost ten percent. It's about nine point nine percent or close in that range. So you know, even though it is something that is substantially over, we have had projects in the past that have come in higher than originally budgeted. So I wouldn't allow this project not to move forward, or I would recommend that you not allow the project not move forward because of the recent notice by Nationwide that they're leaving. Because I believe there are sufficient resources that are available, and it's something that, you know, we talk about, we do economic development every day because companies make decisions every day to move and leave cities. So I don't feel a concern that from the income tax side that that would be a reason to delay the project.
All right, very good.
If I could respond? I appreciate the explanation, Marcia. You know, but going back three years ago, I don't believe, I don't recall, maybe somebody else recalls better than I do. I don't believe that I was the only no vote.
You were.
Thank you.
Never questioned.
Okay. Let me say, however, I think that, I think that there was some trepidation at that point in time, in spite of the fact that I was the only no vote. That there was some trepidation based upon the cost then. So if the cost was presented then as it's being presented today, perhaps there would have been more than my no vote then. And I don't know to what extent that council members today, you know, feel bound by, you know, their yes vote three years ago. Again, I just want to be crystal clear that I supported the shared use path. I thought that that was sufficient to, I don't know that we were necessarily solving a problem, but to address the feeling of the Bicycle Advisory Task Force that we needed, the lanes on the road. And for me, anyway, I thought that that was a reasonable compromise. Obviously, that didn't carry the day, and I'm still back to my no vote.
Okay. John?
Yeah, Tim, I think from being on the Bicycle Task Force, the idea was, this was one of the few uncompleted sections of public transportation for people who want to get to work on bicycles or for just recreational bicyclers. And unfortunately for us, our network ended at Brand Road, and this is the only way to get north to Glick Road and say that we totally completed the bicycle network. So I think it was incumbent upon the Bicycle Task Force, they realized that, hey, this is a finished project. For some reason, we have deleted a section of the city and not concluded a normal transportation network, and I think that's why this thing was suggested. There's another reason I think this is rather important, and that is during the tournament period, we closed down the street, and this would give us an extra five feet of safety because if you thread the cars up there that are parked on Muirfield Drive backing out, I always thought it was rather dangerous. We never changed the speed limit during the tournament from thirty-five to twenty-five, which I thought might be prudent, but you have people backing out into traffic constantly. Some of them have been drinking at the tournament, and I always thought this gives you an extra five feet of additional vision for those people to give you that little bit more security and time to prevent an accident. So I see it as the conclusion of something that we sort of missed over years, and that's the Bicycle Task Force has figured out, along with the Bicycle Trail coming up from the south of the city, the Brand Road one and the Glick Road one. So I think it was a very important part of the long-range planning of our city and knitting our community together.
John, and if I could respond, I, my own rationale was that I didn't believe that there was the traffic on Muirfield Drive in this section in light of the fact that there are two lanes that it warranted, shared use bike lanes on the roadway, when we could have the shared use path on both sides of the road, you know, which could be used for that purpose. I would point out the obvious is that we reached the conclusion on Brand Road, we reached that compromise, which is just a two-lane road, and we determined that, you know, it would affect the character of the road. In that particular instance, I know it's not exactly an apples-to-apples comparison, but here we've got two lanes in each direction. So anyway, I don't want to belabor the point.
Well, I think, Tim, part of this was, this was probably the less expensive solution in a way because otherwise we would have had to run it through people's properties and their backyards, and I don't know how feasible it was. And I think when the Bicycle Task Force realized that, this was the least expensive solution to conclude the bicycle trail system. So they just widened the road by five feet on either side, and I think that was the rationale.
You know, for me, it does, it does, with the completion of the Brand Road piece, the bike path there, this makes a lot more sense than it did back three, two years, three years ago, whenever we looked at it. And the fact that it does do the connection, and I hear what you're saying, Tim, I had some heartburn over it as well initially, but one of the best arguments I've heard is the completion of that, of that bike connectivity, if you will, from Glick to Brandon and points beyond. So why don't we vote on, let's vote on this ordinance.
Could I just ask one question?
Yeah, please.
Sorry. I am curious, though, Paul, as to why is the cost, I understand what you're saying in terms of what the specific issues were that were so much more expensive, but why were we so far off in understanding the size of the, the cost of the bridges and all?
I think there was a preliminary estimate on their length, and then when we got into the detailed design and looked at the hydraulics and the floodplain, they actually were longer than originally anticipated. And then the also just the construction of the abutments and what we've seen in recent projects.
That was my second question. Will these look like the ones we see on Brand Road?
Absolutely.
And size-wise, are they similar length-wise?
Yeah, they'd be similar. This is sixty-seven feet. We've had anywhere from twenty-five feet along the south side of Brand Road. I think the other bridge is just over fifty feet.
So both are longer.
Yeah. So these are fairly long compared to other bridges that we have in the city of a similar type.
The only thing I just wanted to bring up as I was driving here today, which Tim's right, that, you know, our concept was that people would use shared, the shared path, and we were dealing with both of them at the same time that year. But today, you know, more of a race kind of bike.
Right.
Not necessarily one that is exclusively used for recreation. Those people are on Brand Road. They're not on the shared path, although the shared path is used extensively by walkers and joggers and all that type of thing. So you know, to the extent that we can mark off on the road bicycle paths, I think it's probably safer in the long run.
And we frequently get that concern conveyed to us that the avid cyclist still is on the roadway and not using the paths.
We talked about that on Brand Road. There wasn't adequate room to do just that, so.
Correct.
Nevertheless, any, anything else? Let us vote on, on the motion if we haven't already, if we're guys.
We have three, right?
We.
Something.
Two.
Two.
Two initially.
Yes.
I apologize for the confusion.
This is on sixty-five and sixty-six.
Correct.
Yeah, and we need a motion.
Okay, motion to spend the public hearing.
Second.
All right, on the motion.
Mr. Reiner. Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Leck Leider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes. And on the ordinance.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Leck Leider.
No. Okay, thank you. I move to suspend the council rules of order to group ordinance sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy together. Introduce them and ask clerk to read the names of the property owners into the record.
Second.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Leck Leider.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Vice Mayor Gerber. Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
These are, ordinance sixty-eight is Thomas W. Gozyrovsky, Linda A. Gozyrovsky. Sixty-nine is George Daniel Schreiber, Schrebus, and Elaine D. Schrebus. Seventy dash fourteen is the Country Club at Muirfield Village, and seventy-one fourteen is the Muirfield Association.
Mr. Hammer Smith.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to include seventy-one. That's a separate project.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I think I did not mean to include seventy-one.
Yeah, that comes later. Thanks.
Yes, these three acquisitions, once again, are associated council with the Muirfield Drive Bike Lane Project. I apologize, but we do have a mix here. So sixty-eight dash fourteen and sixty-nine dash fourteen are actually associated with the bike lanes. They are up on the north end of the project, along the west side of Muirfield Drive, from two private property owners. We do need an easement from them to create the bike lanes, and also in this process, we're going to have to relocate the existing Muirfield Trail that's located along the west side of Muirfield Drive. So along with working with these two property owners, you also will see in ordinance seventy dash fourteen from the Country Club at Muirfield Village, also an easement from them because they own a piece of property up in that same vicinity. So from the Country Club, we actually have two different locations that we're working with, both the bridges along the west side of Muirfield Drive and in this particular area. For the first residence, the appraised value of which they were agreeable was three thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars. For the neighbor immediately adjacent to them to the south, the appraised value was fifteen hundred dollars. And again, working with the Country Club, we had a settlement value for all locations of which they're involved of twenty thousand dollars. Staff does recommend approval this evening, and once again, that this be treated, I believe, as an emergency measure, and we dispense with the public hearing. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, counsel. Questions?
I'll move to dispense with the public hearing and treat as emergency.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Leck Leider.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes, on the ordinance.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Mr. Leck Leider.
No.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance seventy-one dash fourteen.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary, execute conveyance documents to accept the donation of a zero point zero zero three acre more or less fee simple interest donated by Muirfield Association, Inc. for the property at the southwest corner of Dublin Road and Glick Road. Zero point zero two six more or less fee simple interest to zero point zero zero two acre more or less storm sewer easement, zero point zero eleven acre more or less temporary easement, zero point zero one six acre more or less temporary easement donated by Muirfield Association for the property located on Glick Road for construction improvements at the intersection of Dublin Road and Glick Road, declaring an emergency.
Awesome.
Last of the acquisitions, as far as I'm concerned this evening, although you do have one more that the city manager will be covering. We are back over, once again, members of council, at the Dublin Road and Glick Road intersection, at the southwest corner, working with the Muirfield Association. As depicted on the exhibit shown on the screen, we do have a permanent right of way necessary to improve the intersection, most notably really to relocate the existing path, and then also involved with this particular portion of the project is impacted their existing sign. Recognizing that the Muirfield Association is donating the requested right of way, we are going to assume responsibility for their sign relocation and do that on their behalf as part of the project. We appreciate their donation and their cooperation, as always, working with the city. Staff does, once again, recommend approval this evening, and that this be treated, or that we dispense with the public hearing, that we do treat this as an emergency measure.
Thank you. Questions?
I'll move to dispense with public. I'll move to dispense with public hearing and treat as emergency.
Second. Ann, on the motion?
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
On the ordinance.
Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Ms. Janice Zerker. Yes.
And Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Ordinance seventy-two dash fourteen.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire zero point zero four five acre more or less permanent easement, zero point zero four six acre more or less temporary easement from Thomas A. McDowell individually and Thomas A. McDowell trustee at the property located at the corner of France Road and Rings Road where the relocation of overhead utilities underground along France Road declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Marcia?
Yeah, and as Paul mentioned earlier on the Techmark project, this is for the burial of the overhead utilities that we've talked about for quite a number of years. This is for a temporary and a permanent easement. Mr. McDowell has agreed with the appraised value of seven thousand nine hundred and ten dollars, and this is at the northeast corner of Rings and France, and we are asking for adoption this evening, waiving the second reading and passing as an emergency.
Very good. Counsel, questions?
I'll move to dispense with public hearing and treat as emergency.
Second.
Thank you. On the motion?
Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution fifty-eight dash fourteen.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the Muirfield Drive North Fork Indian Run pedestrian bridges.
I'll introduce it. Mr. Hammersmith?
Members of council, as you just discussed previously, we have before you this evening the bid acceptance resolution for the Muirfield Drive Bike Lane Project. That project was broken into two different components. The two bridges, pedestrian bridges, to be located over the North Fork Indian Run, just north of Brand Road, being the first project, and then the second being the nine thousand two hundred feet of bike lanes from essentially Moore's Place or just north of the North Fork Indian Run up to just south of Glick Road. As you have discussed, that does include the replacement of the existing AEP streetlights. There are sixty of those located along the roadway with twenty-five-foot poles, and then we will converting those or be using LED fixtures. They will be, if you're interested, in eight-bar fixture, which is our smallest fixture that we use. And in working with the association and several of the residents, the goal was to just replicate the light as it exists today, which is really just wayfinding lights. It's not really highway lighting is what we use along Emerald Parkway. So, the first resolution this evening is the bid for the pedestrian bridges. On June twentieth, we did open bids. We had three bids that we received. Complete General Construction Company submitted the lowest and best bid of six hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ten cents, which was five percent over the engineer's estimate of six hundred thousand dollars. Staff has reviewed Complete General's bid, is comfortable with their bid, finds their prices to be consistent with our past experience, and we have always had favorable experience with Complete General Construction. So, staff does recommend this evening approval of this resolution. Be glad to answer any questions. It is worth noting, again, that our intent is to begin construction in July, and the anticipated completion date is November twentieth, or, I'm sorry, November seventh of this year.
Questions?
Is that just for the bridges, or is that for everything?
No, that is just for the two bridges, the six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
No, I know that, but I mean the timeframe.
Time.
That'll be consistent for both projects, that completion date.
Okay.
The start and the completion.
The completion date again was-
November seventh.
November seventh. Okay. Any other questions? Is there a vote on the resolution, please?
Treat it as an emergency.
Hmm?
No, no, we don't need to do that.
Don't see that there, no.
No, we don't have to do that.
Um, Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider.
No.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
You know, I'd just add that I too had some heartburn early on on this two or three
years ago, but I really do see the value in the connectivity of the trails, as I mentioned earlier, and most especially after the completion of the Brand Road project. So-
Yeah, you can, those people can now reach downtown in about twelve, fourteen minutes if they want to go full speed.
Very good. Resolution sixty-one dash fourteen.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the Muirfield Drive Bike Lanes Project.
I'll introduce it. Mr. Hammersmith?
The second component of the Muirfield Drive Bike Lane Project is the bike lanes themselves, again, from just north of the North Fork Indian Run up to Glick Road. We will be widening the roadway to the outside. The bike lanes themselves will be five feet wide. Generally speaking, we'll be adding anywhere from three to four feet of existing, or asphalt to the existing roadway. We're going to be utilizing some of the shoulder that's there. And then also, a component of the project is some additional storm sewers to better drain the area, and then finally grating and blending the bike lanes and the shoulders into existing properties. We did open bids on June twentieth, just after we opened the pedestrian bridge bids, and we ended up with four different bids. Once again, Complete General Construction Company submitted the lowest and best bid of one million seven hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and four cents, which was twenty-one point two percent under the engineer's estimate of two point two million dollars. To answer one of your previous questions, what component is the street lighting of the project in terms of cost? It's just under four hundred and forty thousand dollars for the sixty new lights. So, that is included in the bid. As always, Complete General Construction Company has been very good to work with. They have completed previous projects, as indicated in the staff report, and staff does recommend approval this evening and award of this project to Complete General Construction Company. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions?
I just wanted to make sure that, because of the addition, particularly of the asphalt, that we are going to be having the bike white paint.
Yes, they'll be striping.
Right, is that correct?
Yes.
Very good. Any other questions? Ann?
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider.
No.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Resolution sixty-two dash fourteen.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the Dublin Road, State Route seven forty-five and Glick Road intersection improvement.
I'll introduce it. Mr. Hammersmith?
Members of council, a project many years in the making. It's the improvement of the Dublin Road-Glick Road intersection, which quite simply is an improved signalized intersection with the addition of left-turn lanes on all four legs. Generally, the left-turn lanes are about two hundred and fifty feet in length. We have been working, as you know, closely with the Village of Shawnee Hills, the Delaware County Engineers Office, and the Ohio Department of Transportation. And last year, a grant application was submitted to the Ohio Public Works Commission, which was successful. It was submitted by the Village of Shawnee Hills. We did receive both a grant in the amount of a half million dollars and then a loan in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the project. And then we did enter into a cooperative agreement with the Village of Shawnee Hills. The engineer's estimate for the project as bid was one point five million dollars. On June eighteenth, we received seven bids, and the lowest and best bid was submitted by Double Z Construction Company for one million five hundred and ninety-nine thousand seventy-three dollars and eighty-two cents, which was six point six percent over the estimate. We did closely review their bid and noticed that the difference or the increase in the bid was really due to the storm sewer installation and the concern for bedrock in the area. We were comfortable with their bid prices, and also the addition of the water quality units, which is another component of the project necessary for the management of stormwater. Staff is, has had favorable experience with Double Z Construction, and this evening recommends the award of this bid to Double Z, and I would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. It's been a long time coming, Paul, and I know it's going to solve a significant amount of problems up in that part of the world, so we appreciate that. And John, you spent a lot of money up in your, you might be able to retire now. We spent a lot of money up in your award tonight. I just want to point that out.
Well, I gotta ask Paul, you know, between four-thirty now and six o'clock, it's about two hundred yards of cars, and you think this is-
Sometimes I'm one of those.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, I wish we could have put a traffic circle in there.
I wish we could have too, but-
Yeah. Do you think it's going to alleviate the problem?
Yeah, because much of the delay caused at the intersection is really caused by the left-turn movements, and then interrupting the through movements themselves. So, it only takes one person wanting to make a left turn, they can delay twelve other cars behind them.
Yeah, it's almost reached breakdown level. This couldn't happen any sooner.
And this is not going to be a level of Service A fix. We knew that going into it. And when we looked at it, this was really the best solution, given the constraints at the intersection itself. But it really has been a great partnership with all the agencies involved. It's been wonderful to work with them, and we're glad to finally get to this point. And we're hoping November fourteenth of this year, it'll be done, new signal, and much happiness right before Thanksgiving.
I know a lot of your reticence was so many jurisdictions to work with up there, and we finally got through it, and I appreciate all the extra effort to make that happen. It's not easy.
It's been a team effort on everybody on staff.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on the resolution?
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. You're done with me.
Okay, good. Resolution sixty-three dash fourteen.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the John Shields Parkway Phase One Project.
I'll introduce it.
Very good. Staff report, Mr. Caligan?
Good evening, council members. The John Shields Parkway Phase One Project is the first public capital infrastructure project related to private development within the Bridge Street District. The timing of the project is coordinated with the development agreement with variable land holding, which requires the city open the road to traffic in time for them to receive their certificate of occupancy for the variable healthcare facility, which is currently anticipated by December of two thousand and fourteen. So, the schedule of this project is in line with the conditions set forth in that development agreement. Since this is the first public infrastructure project within the Bridge Street District, the materials and design elements that we've been discussing with council the past few months will be incorporated into this project. So, specifically, the items and the materials that we reviewed with council in the June second work session as a part of the Bridge Street District Streetscape Study Initiative, those items are being utilized on this project. So, this is a big step. Project includes the construction of approximately fourteen, or four hundred feet of the east-west connection just south of Tuller that ties into Tuller Ridge Drive. The work for the project includes new roadway with granite curb, brick paver sidewalk, on-street parallel parking areas with permeable brick pavers, granite-edged planting beds, landscaping, and then there's some utility work as well. Bids for the project were opened on June seventeenth. The engineer's estimate was one point three five million dollars. We received three bids with Complete General Construction Company submitting the lowest and best bid of one million two hundred and fifty-one thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and nineteen cents, which is seven point four percent under the engineer's estimate. Staff anticipates construction to start in mid-July. There's an interim completion date in the contract so that the trap, the roadway will be open to traffic in November, so that provides us with a little cushion, hopefully, in case there is weather that delays the project at all. With the final completion date, we'll wrap up next April for the project. Previous experience with Complete General's been favorable. Staff recommends council approval of Resolution sixty-three fourteen, accepting as lowest and best bid of Complete General Construction Company and authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement with Complete General for this project.
Okay. Counsel, questions, discussion?
I just had a question. So, what will be done by November?
The roadway portion of it. So, we'll return in the spring to do landscaping and wrap up like we do on many of our projects.
That gets them their CO.
But the road will be open for use by the facility and traveling.
And it'll be closed during construction?
Yeah, it's a new roadway section.
Good. Anything else? Ann, on the resolution?
Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. It's exciting. Resolution sixty-four dash fourteen.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with Rumpke of Ohio, Inc. for the collection, transportation, delivery for disposal, or processing solid waste recyclable materials and yard waste generated by residential units, municipal facilities, and during special events, and acceptance of delivery and processing of recyclable materials.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Megan.
Good evening. The current solid waste services agreement was entered into with Rumpke of Ohio in August of two thousand and nineteen. The term of the contract was a five-year contract beginning January first of two thousand and ten, and it terminates at the end of this year on December thirty-first and fourteen. Accordingly, the Solid Waste Consortium, which consists of ten communities in the region, has been working and planning the procurement of these services all year long. All of these communities in the consortium total approximately fifty-five thousand eight hundred residential units or households, with Dublin accounting for thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-eight households as of the end of two thousand and thirteen. Services were bid in two ways. First, we accepted bids for recycling, processing, and then we took separate bids for collection services. As far as the recycling services go, we received bids on March eighteenth, opened them. Rumpke was the only bidder and bid zero dollars per ton processing of recyclables, and they offered a monetary revenue sharing incentive for all recyclable materials when newspaper number eight reaches a hundred and twenty-five dollars per ton in the resale marketplace. Staff reviewed this bid and recommends Dublin entering into agreement with Rumpke for acceptance of delivery and processing of recyclable materials. As far as collection services bid goes, bids were accepted and opened on May twentieth of two thousand and fourteen. Bidders had the choice of bidding three different options. First option was a status quo option, which would maintain the current service specifications that each of the communities currently has. Second option was the automated collection option, where each resident would receive wheeled carts for refuse and recycling. And then the third option was contractor design, which allowed for each bidder, provided them with the opportunity to propose variations and design their own service package. Consortium received nine timely responses from four different vendors, including Republic Services, Inland Waste Solutions, Rumpke, and Local Waste. The bid process obviously was successful in attracting multiple bidders, which was part of the goal, and as a result, we received very good bids. The most competitive bids for each of the option proposed lower per household prices than we currently have as of today, which is seventeen dollars and three cents per month per household. Rumpke's bids were all considered low and evaluated by each of the participating communities. Staff determined Rumpke's contractor design bid A as the lowest and best bid. The bid price varies depending on the size of the waste collection container that is utilized per household. So, for example, the bid price for a thirty-five gallon solid waste container is fourteen dollars and forty-two cents per household per month. The next size up is a sixty-five gallon container, which is fourteen ninety-seven, and then the largest container is a ninety-five gallon container, which is fifteen ninety-six. So, based on the current container sizes utilized throughout the city, that would equate to an estimated twelve percent decrease from the current contract price citywide. This bid also provides for rebate for increased recycling based on a sliding scale. So, with regard to the service specifications that the Rumpke contractor design bid A provides, it does provide for a few changes in service from what we have today. The first being a choi, there'd be a choice of three different sizes of refuse containers, and then three different sizes of recycling containers. All of those containers would be provided by Rumpke, and they all are wheeled carts with lids, and they're out in the lobby, if you want to take a look at those tonight. All the collection services would be performed on the same day, and Rumpke will utilize CNG trucks to perform the collection services. As a part of Rumpke's bid, it was proposed that Dublin's collection day for refuse recycling and yard waste would be Wednesday. The consortium members had a discussion about the proposed days, and since the wording of the bid was worded as a proposed schedule, the consortium had discussions, and all indications are that if Dublin were to accept Rumpke's contractor design bid A, so long as Dublin's service day for refuse recycling and yard waste is to be on Monday, Rumpke would make every effort to accommodate the consortium's wishes.
That's the million-dollar question everybody wants to know.
Yes.
So, everything will be on Monday?
That's, that's what's proposed tonight.
Okay. So, our action tonight doesn't give us any kind of assurance?
It's not a guarantee, but the action would be authorizing city manager to enter into contract or contractor design A so long as the service delivery day is on Monday.
All right.
And then we would have discussions with Rumpke from that point forward.
Which is consistent with our past discussions, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other communities are similarly situated if they're desiring different days too.
Very good.
So since there's many factors associated with each of the bids, staff requested and city council granted the matter be referred to the Public Services Committee. The committee met on June 23rd and the Public Services Committee supported staff's recommendation of contractor design bid A so long as the service day is on Monday. So the recommendation, staff recommends Council approval of Resolution 64-14, authorizing the city manager to enter into two separate agreements for terms of three years with the possibility of two extension years with Rumpke for collection, transportation, delivery, for disposal, or processing of solid waste, recyclable materials, and yard waste generated by residential units, municipal facilities, and during special events. And then two, acceptance of delivery and processing of recyclable materials.
Very good. And I know the Public Services Committee Chair you just mentioned had given her recommendations as well, so we don't need to deal with that. Amy is out, obviously. Are there any other council questions or discussion? Ann?
I'm Mr. Nisi Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
I think it'll be useful to have everything on the same day, Monday, if we can get that done. So let's move, get that, hopefully that'll happen that way. Resolution 65-14.
Appointing a member to an unexpired term on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I guess I'll introduce it.
And you're going to give us the report as well?
Well, as you're all aware, Joseph Buddy turned in his resignation, I believe, it was a little over a month ago, to be effective sometime this month. And earlier this year, as everyone is aware, we interviewed an awful lot of candidates, many, many qualified candidates, I want to emphasize that, who were eager to serve. We met last Tuesday, the Administrative Committee as a whole, and we have recommended Todd Zimmerman to fill the remaining term of Joe Buddy. And that's contained in the resolution.
Any discussion, Council? Anybody?
I'll second if that's necessary.
Okay. Is there a vote on the resolution?
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
I'm Mr. Nisi Zerker.
Alabstein.
And Mayor Keenan.
Yes, and I know you will extend our heartfelt thank you to-
Certainly will.
Mr. Zimmerman for stepping up. We appreciate that. Anything else to come before the others? Staff comments?
Few items. The first one, the Ohio Society of Professional Engineers has awarded the City of Dublin an Outstanding Engineering Achievement Award for our Emerald Parkway widening project, the partnership with Columbus. And I think anybody who drives that area can really appreciate that improvement and the impact that it's had on the traffic in that area, so.
I still can't figure out what happened to all the cars.
Yeah, they get, they get to keep moving.
I know. It's just really strange how that dramatically changed.
Yeah, it is amazing. Second of all, just to let you know that there is a scale model that Crawford Hoyne brought in this afternoon of the, their project, Bridge Park, both east and west. It's a 3D printer and it's out in the lobby. I don't know if it's going to be there for a week. They have another meeting that they're going to be taking it to, but it's out there and it's pretty interesting to see what it looks like in three dimension. Also, another good piece of news in the back there, and I'm going to ask him to come forward, is Rob James. He's our new Director of Streets and Utilities. And Rob started yesterday, this is his first day, so I'll let him tell you a little bit about himself.
Good evening. My name's Rob James. I'm mayor, members of council. I'm happy to have completed my second day on the job.
And you came back too, that's good.
I've spent the last 12 years working as the Director of Public Works for the City of Centerville. I've got over 27 years of municipal experience total. Looking forward to this opportunity. This just kind of came up in front of me. Couldn't pass up a chance to come and serve residents in the city of Dublin. Very happy to be here. Look forward to getting my house sold in Centerville and getting myself relocated.
Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Welcome aboard. We got a lot of new streets going in for you too to deal with, so.
Very impressed with the staff that I have and look forward to working with them and providing some leadership and making some very, some changes I think will be very worthwhile and working with Megan on, you know, doing, doing a really, as good a job as I can possibly do here.
We were all impressed with your background, your resume, so welcome aboard and we're looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? That's good. So we go to Council Committee reports. Amy's out today as we know. We'll go to Council Standing Committee, Finance Committee, barely anything?
No.
And Administrative Committee?
Just briefly, we met last Tuesday to review the charter and the rules of council. I'm expecting a resolution to address rules of council at our next scheduled council meeting. And all it was, and all of you were there, is simply to better define what constitutes a majority when we don't have all people present. And that's it.
Very good. Community Development, John?
Nothing.
Nothing there? Or just a roundtable? And Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Marsh, for the memo about that garage on Bright Road. What happens in September 25th, when it says in here adjudication at work? What happens if it's still the way it is and nothing's happened and September 5th rolls, 25th rolls around?
Well, we'll contact them and there's the ability for the city to start action against them to either complete the project. And it's one of those, they usually are, it usually takes some time and it's potential that it ends up as litigation in court to get it completed or to be removed.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Looking forward to, I'm sure that's going to be another great event on Friday. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Just as a follow-up question on Greg's point on Bright Road. Was this Eastside Civic Association informed about this? Oh, good. All right, great. Because I'm, we get some emails or something. I had a question on Emerald Parkway, Phase Eight. And I was reading the records of action of planning and zoning related to corporate offices or buildings that were coming before them for that area. And I guess I had a couple concerns about when we were putting this road through, my assumption was that we anticipated that we would be putting in commercial buildings or corporate buildings. And in fact, we're looking forward to that going in there. But of course, there were many, many neighbors who came forward at the Planning and Zoning Meeting opposed to the buildings and the height of the buildings and, and the noise potential and et cetera, et cetera. Then in the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it speaks about the Bright Road area plan that I believe is 30 years old or something. I couldn't, I thought I had seen in here the date of it, but now I couldn't find it again. I thought I'd marked it.
Yeah, and the area plan has been updated and is included in the current community plan and it does anticipate commercial development. Some of it is not as intense as some of the other development along I-270, but there is intended to be office development along the parcels that are to the east of the site that the school district owns, which is immediately to the east of the Grandy Cliffs development. So those properties are all identified as commercial development. And then we have the strip that's along the frontage of the property that the city purchased as well as the Thomas property to the west on, of the Grandy Cliffs development.
And did the updated community plan continue suggesting only two-story buildings?
I don't know that there's the recommendation on two-story. I think part of it to the, further to the east, there was up to three-story, is my recollection.
Yeah, I think the discussion that ensued there that you're referring to, really, remember, we took an application, we being the city as the applicant, vetted the concerns of the residents relative to the west end of Emerald Eight. The proposal we had on there was 30,000 feet growing to 50,000 feet. That was the focus of the discussion. They were concerned about the height of those buildings relative to that west end of Emerald Eight, but as Randy Roth reminded everyone of the history of the development of that Bright Road area plan, pointed out that it could be much more intense office use to the east end of Emerald, of Emerald Parkway, which, and if you look at the Bright Road area plan and the community plan, it does show much more intensive use of office space in that, on that east end. And that's, I would say, multi-story.
Towards Sawmill Road you're talking about.
Towards Sawmill Road, yeah.
And where was it, where was the building located that you were bringing forward?
Based on the Holder property that the city owns, right.
Quite a bit, some.
To the west.
Or west.
To the west. West, I mean.
But there was some worry about the impact on the Holder property as well with respect to the sanctity or the-
Correct. There really was a history of discussion around two-story buildings there, maybe even one-story. So we were really taking forward the idea of an application that would focus on two-story, pulling that square footage together as one larger building. So it was a great discussion and I think we learned a lot through that process and we'll continue to evaluate the potential for that site, so.
One thing that I, I think that because we haven't developed that area for so many years, you know, that everybody living on that, particularly on the south side of Bright Road, who is most impacted, of course, by the completion now of Emerald Parkway and the potential of corporate buildings being built, you know, are naturally so concerned about the environmental impacts and all that. I know that even in what I'm watching, the road going in now, you can see the houses, you know, and of course, there's going to be landscaping put in there and more additional buffers. But I guess we always knew this was, and they always knew this would be. It's just that 25 years went by and, you know, most of them, those people have lived there almost the entire time that that street has been there. So I'm not sure how we can mitigate the circumstances when this was always the plan, you know, and to whatever extent we can with landscaping and mounding and-
Right. And I, I think, I agree with you. And I think too, that what we need to do in our economic development efforts is, we've really focused on trying to attract numerous projects there and we really pull that plan out and look at that every time we're, we're looking at a, an opportunity. So, you know, the commitment is to stay as true to the plan as possible. There'll be some tweaking around the edges as people come forward with potential projects and we'll, we'll keep that, you know, right in front of us as we go through those, so.
Well, I think that's one of those developments that does pose issues and it's because that development went in before I-270 was there. And if, if we would have known, or the people before us would have known that I-270 would be there, I don't think that, that development would be there.
Yeah, I totally agree. And then my final question, this was just something strange that I noticed. It's always been like this, but I just happened to notice it. The bike path or the all-purpose path, you know, from, going south from Brand Road to that first sort of housing development, not quite, you don't go as far as the school, but it's on the, it's really on the west side of Mirrorfield Drive. So you're, you're, I don't know the name of that street, Tim, do you know? It's sort of in your area, that is past the, past Terra Hill. It's further north than Terra Hill. Maybe it's Dublinshire, so it's from Dublinshire, which I think is called something else on that side of the street, and Brand Road. Why is that path so narrow compared to our regular paths?
I don't have an answer right now. We'll have to, we'll have to check and verify and get back with you on that.
Yeah, it just looks, it doesn't look like it's the same, you know, anywhere near as wide as the other paths are. Thank you.
Okay, is that everything?
Yep.
Tim?
Nothing. Thank you. Look forward to seeing everybody Friday.
Thank you. John?
You requested that I meet quarterly with the Dublin Arts Council and the City of Dublin as your representative, and I just want to give you a quick update on the meeting. Some exciting news is that Ohio University's Theater Department is thinking about bringing their plays to Dublin. And they have eight plays, so much like Ottermind does in Ohio State, and they're going to have like eight shows in 10 weeks. So they're sort of looking around for a place to present these plays. So sort of a nice cultural improvement in our quality of life. Let's see, the City Scenes Award is coming out, City Scenes Magazine, and Dublin was voted Best Suburban Arts Program and Best Art Gallery. So that was a nice surprise. August 16th is Cash In Trash Out, if you are interested in participating along the river. And we're referring to geocaching, but strangely enough, the arts folks have got into having trash bags put next to the river boxes. So there's dispensers, so while you're down there enjoying the river, you can help clean it up. And there's a reward program for somebody turning in trash bags, trash filled, bags filled with trash. The Sense of Place, which many people in Dublin participated in, the person who managed that said never before has so many answered the call of any city he's ever worked with, which shows a high level of interest on our citizens. He didn't expect more than 300 people, which he thought would be a surprising number, and then 410 responded. There was over 70 interviews and he said usually on focus groups, he'll invite 12 people and generally, three will show up, but he said in Dublin, 11 or 12 showed up every time. He was just absolutely amazed at the interest of our people in the arts program. And as you know, water and landscape landforms are the two most primary art projects that our people were interested in. And I'd be remiss on this Eddie Adams Vietnam Show if I didn't say that Sandy Pescarsen had a lot to do with this and this will be a major art show of national significance. For, you would have thought this would have occurred in LA or New York or someplace and it's, again, a compliment to our people for putting all this together and getting it organized. So another feather in the hat of our city, so thank you. That's it.
Thank you, John. Rick?
Just one item. We received an email from, I believe, Dana Friday regarding economic development here in Dublin since 2008 or so. And, you know, as I read that email, I was very impressed with the number of new jobs that we've created here in Dublin, particularly in this soft economy. And I just wanted to say hats off to Dana and his staff and certainly to Marsh and everyone else for, that's been a primary objective of council and, you know, I think a job well done. I just want to say I appreciate what you're doing.
Very good. Thank you. I got a couple calls on the dust on Emerald Parkway. I presume somebody's followed up on that. They should have water trucks or something knocking down the dirt and debris. Maybe you haven't heard about it, but if you haven't, I'd appreciate the staff's follow-up. I'm sorry? Okay. Ken's on that? All right. Thank, thank you, Ken. June 12th, I attended the ribbon cutting at the Heartland of Dublin, very excellent facility there. On June 25th, we had the Fleet Management Open House in the afternoon. They had a nice program for the, all the employees over there. They were celebrating, I believe, the 16th best in the-
In the country.
In the country, which is quite an accomplishment. I hadn't been over there for a long time and it's, it's an impressive operation. I did get a chance to see the new NAPA arrangement there too, and I understand that's working very well. There's the Arthritis Foundation's coming up, when is that coming up? Looks like July 11th and 12th, that weekend for council. There are some opportunities here if you want to check in with me or with Ann with respect to the attendance there. And I guess we'll look forward to seeing everybody at the Fourth of July event. One more event with perfect weather, I might add. So the beat goes on. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn into executive session at this time to consider personnel matters. I'd like a second, please. Thank you.
Mr. Lucklider?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Nisi Zerker.
Yes.
Okay. We can take just a couple minutes to take a break and then meet back there?